Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.
My name is Tom Daley. I'm your moderator. I want to call to order the 2022 Shasbury Annual Town Meeting. The Shasbury residents qualified to vote at the annual town meeting are hereby notified and warned to meet virtually via Zoom on Sunday, February 27, 2022, at 3:00 PM to hold a public information hearing by electronic means. Upon completion of the information session, the meeting will stand adjourned until Tuesday, March 1, 2022, from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM when voting by Australian ballot will commence at the Town Garage on North Road for the election of town officers and consideration of the ballot articles. A point that the selectmen have made is that it's very important that we are able to meet in person annually, as we have done for the last 200-plus years. Extenuating circumstances with COVID have caused us to have to do the remote meeting thing. It necessarily impairs how we're able to interact with everybody and how we're able to act on certain articles with voting and so on and so forth and expressing our opinions and comments and such. Last year, it was very clear that we needed to do a remote meeting. This year, in January, the selectmen were tasked with trying to figure out, trying to predict where we were going with COVID, where were we going to be in a month's time. In order to be safe and be, they were very conservative, safe and cautious, they said that, well, they set the meeting to be remote. Maybe at this time, it's changed a little bit, but the decision had to be made. They were put in a tough spot and they made the decision to go forward remotely. Hopefully, next year, we're all going to be able to meet in person. This is an informational meeting, so there's not going to be any voting. The typical articles that we would vote from the floor will be voted on Tuesday, March 1, at the Town Garage. Today, we'll read those articles and we'll discuss them. You'll have an opportunity for questions, comments, things of that nature. One of the problems that we have that makes these meetings get laggy is, I don't know if that's really a word, but makes the meeting just slow is the bandwidth gets used up with video. So, we would ask if you're, actually, this is also being broadcast live on Cat TV, channel 1085. So, if you folks could, somebody could turn that on, you'd be able to observe or watch the meeting and not have your video on unless you are going to comment or you have a question, something like that. I'm co-hosting with Dave, that our town administrator. He will be watching and observing folks that are, that want to have a comment, have a question, things of that nature. I will move slowly through the comment period so that you all do have an opportunity. You can email questions or comments to zoning@shasburivermont.gov. That's zoning@shasburivermont, or I said that wrong. Strike all that. It's zoning@shasburivt.com. Shasbury, zoning@shasburivt.gov. I gotta slow down. I said .com. It's all .gov. zoning@shasburivt.gov. Okay. I want to thank all of our town officers, employees, and volunteers who throughout the year make it possible for our town to run the way that it runs. I'm not going to name everybody, but if you look in our town report, it has everybody listed who takes an active part and active role. Anybody that's not listed in there who's taking part, volunteering and so on and so forth, on behalf of all of the citizens of the town of Shasbury, we thank you very much for all of your efforts. Okay, the Select Board. Art, you're here. I see you, Chairman of the Board, Art Whitman. I believe I saw Tony Krulikowski. He has checked in. He's the vice chair. I saw, let's see, Mike Chianowski. He's on. Mike. Joe Barber. Is Joe Barber present? I don't see him yet. And Ken Harrington. Is Ken on audio anywhere?
No, I don't have Ken on.
Okay. How about Joe Barber? Have I overlooked him?
No, I don't have Joe either.
Okay. All right. Well, we can proceed. Okay, the first item is to hear the reports of the town officers. The reports are contained in our annual report. This isn't anything that we have to take formal action on. It's a time when we ask if there are any kind of corrections that need to be made to the reports as they're presented. And while you're, if there are some of you that want to comment or such on it, I want to turn it over to Art at this point in time for his report.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom. Yeah, as Chairman of the Select Board, I thought I'd just take, like to take a few minutes just to kind of briefly talk to you about what we've done in the past year. I want to kind of back up a little bit to, went to the fall of 2020 when there was a lot of questions about what COVID was going to do to our economy and so on and so forth. So, we worked up a budget that was extremely conservative. And as the old saying goes, you never want to count your chickens before they hatch because, as it turned out, 2021 was a very good year for us. We were able to beat all our obligations, do all the work necessary within our budget. We were able to make improvements to the road system. And we also were able to purchase a couple new pieces of machinery, an excavator and a roadside mower. And we were even able to finish a major covert replacement up in Shasbury Hollow that was six years in the making. That meant all the state water and wildlife, fish and wildlife restrictions. This was a major thing for us. We were able to negotiate a contract with Casella that gave us more control over the dump site. And we have plans to build ramps and decks that are certified to be ADA compliant so that we will be able to walk up and dump recyclables and things like that directly into the larger containers that we have on order to save us money. All of this is coming along very nicely. The office passed its annual audit review with flying colors as always. We are in very sound financial state. This town has sinking funds and a plan for the replacement of all the DPW equipment and the fire trucks way into the future. This means having the money to pay for each piece of equipment when it comes time to replacement without having to borrow money or end up pay interest. We have a contract with a coping study, with a company to do a coping study for the possibility of sidewalks on Grandview Street, Hawks Avenue, and Bank Street Extension, which is on the west side of town. Because of a state mandate, we took over the responsibility of Grandview Cemetery and are now in the process of mapping and digitizing that area. This list can go on and on, but I want to make the comment that none of this could have happened without the communication and the working partnership of everybody in the town. From the town clerk to the treasurer, zoning administrator, town administrator, road crew foreman, and the whole DPW crew, it's been a team effort. Our fire department is dedicated and second to none. The planning board and the DRB chairmans and their crews are steadfast in serving their town. And I personally feel that you as a taxpayer can feel very proud and confident that everyone involved is mindful that what is best for Shasbury is what is being done. I'd just like to take, would close with a few comments about ARPA money. ARPA money is a huge amount of money that is scheduled to come to Shasbury. We could receive $1.1 million. And God only knows there's enough places to spend it. But this is your money. And the selectmen want to hear what some of your ideas are. And so, our thoughts are that sometime after the first year, when the, some of the mandates for public gatherings are lessened a little bit, we can start having in-person Select Board meetings and you can attend and have your feelings brought forward and we can all work together on how we're going to spend this money that benefits everybody in town. That's all I have for right now. Tommy?
Thank you, Art. We'll move directly to the articles that are normally on the floor. There are five articles. They will be voted on, we normally would be voting on them on the floor, but they'll be voted on by Australian ballot on Tuesday. The first article, shall the town authorize collection of taxes on real or personal property by its treasurer, which are due in hand on or before Tuesday, November 10, 2022, at 5:00 PM or likewise postmarked no later than Thursday, November 10, 2022? Let me back up. I probably need new glasses, a new prescription. It would be the tax, shall the town authorize collection of taxes on real or personal property by its treasurer, which are due in hand on or before Thursday, November 10, 2022, at 5:00 PM or likewise postmarked no later than Thursday, November 10, 2022? We need to wait a few minutes, wait a few seconds, a little bit of time to see, does anybody have any questions? Are there any comments? We had a comment from Jody Coon. Jody, if you want to unmute and ask a question or comment? Jody, can you hear us out there? Jody, if you can, restart your video and unmute.
Tom, she had texted me a question. I wanted to give her a chance to address it because she is on here. So, I will just put her question out there. It came in a text to me or an email. I would like to know who is responsible for illegally posting land for tax sale and what the town of Shasbury is doing to correct it.
Would you repeat that, please?
Yeah, the question was, or this question is, one second, I have to read it back up. I'd like to know who is responsible for illegally posting land for tax sale and what the town of Shasbury is doing to correct it. Just, we're addressing this, which isn't really anything to do with this question, this article.
Well, it is, it does have to do with kind of sideways, the collection of taxes. I guess I would say that, I'm going to call that out of order at this point because it's too far off from the question. That's something that perhaps we could address that under other business at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
Anybody else? You have anybody, Dave?
No, we have no one online or texting or emailing.
Okay, let's move on to Article 2. Shall the town appropriate $2,301,468 to defray the town's general and highway expenses for fiscal 2023? The amount of such sum to be raised by property taxes and to be reduced by non-tax revenues and reserve funds. That's our town budget, which is available in the annual town report. And Art, I guess I'd like you to comment on that.
Certainly. Yeah, if you have the annual town report in front of you, the budget goes from page 25 all the way through to page 40. The total is what is posted, $2,301,468. So, probably the first question everybody asks, is it up? And yes, it is up. We are probably in a 6% to 7% inflation rate here about now. We were able to hold our budget to about 5%. If you look back at the budget we're working on presently, that's only a 1%, that was only a 1% increase. So, over two years, we've been able to hold a budget to about, an annual rate of about 3% each year for the last two years. You see on the screen in front of you, a pie chart showing the breakdown of the total budget. The biggest course is 39% goes to DPW, Department of Public Works. Solid waste, that's what it costs to run our landfill facility or recycling for center. Cemeteries, only about 2% of the total budget, planning and planning and that sort of salaries and that sort of stuff for things that have to be done, county taxes, transfer, transferred to reserves. This is what I was talking about earlier, where we, every year, we set aside money into sinking funds for each individual piece of equipment that needs to be replaced in the future. Debt reduction or debt service, mainly that's the Town Garage, plus we have a couple small loans for two pieces of recently purchased equipment. That's only about 5% of our total budget. Community appropriations is 4% of the budget. We'll talk about that later. General Government, this is what it just costed to do business. Public Safety is the fire, fire company and their reserves, the sheriffs and the rescue squad. If we could look at the breakdown of the biggest one, Department of Public Works is our biggest one. If we could look at the pie chart for that, we can talk about what is Department of Public Works. There again, wages and benefits in administration is the biggest part of that, that one, being about 40%. We have a very talented and experienced road crew. We want to keep it that way. Every town in the state is looking for good workers and that sort of stuff. So, we have to make sure that our workers are well compensated. Construction and maintenance, that's just for the gravel and stuff that goes on the road, the coves and that sort of thing. Equipment maintenance, that's what it costs to maintain. It's only 10% of their budget. Parks, recreation and light district, lights for the streetlights is only about 1%. And again, transfer to reserve accounts, this is what the money we set aside every year into each account so that when a fire truck or when a road truck needs replacement, there is the money available so we can pay for it. And we just did that. We just opened the bid for another plow truck to be delivered sometime in the next year and a half or so. This budget, even though it's up 5%, it means that if you have a land or a place that is assessed at $100,000, the increase on your taxes is $22.80. If there's any discussion on the budget, we'd be glad to do it at this time, Tom.
This is, this is when you can ask for, ask questions. Ask for clarification.
Tom, could I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead, Lon.
Just more specifically, is there any money set aside or any plan for where the former Town Garage was in terms of any sort of, you know, plantings or parking or anything like that in this budget? Or is that a project for the future?
I'm going to turn that over to Dave. I think, I think the answer is yes. There's also monies for, there's been sinking funds every year for the vets memorial and so on and so forth. You want to answer some of that, Dave?
Lon, what we've been working on for the last couple of years since the garage came down is trying to get together enough funding so that we can completely redo the area around Coal Hall and also simultaneously address our need for ADA improvements in the building, the back deck, the porch steps, whatever you want to call them, and the little man lift we have inside are both pass a useful lifespan, need to be replaced. There's funding, there's grants for that, not much, $70,000 only for ADA. And the project to correct the ADA here could be. So, anyway, back to it. Let me just take care of this. What we have is, we have funds coming up. We've been trying to talk to different groups that have interest with improving the facilities around here, doing green spacing. There's things I've. Well, there's, there's a few clowns on tonight. I think that took care of those two. So, where was I? So, we need the back deck to be replaced and the ADA to be improved in the building. We're looking at grants for that. There's possibilities to use some of the ARPA money for that if the town's willing to. But to make it short, we do have plans for landscaping, for replacing, making the building more ADA accessible. We've discussed expanding the veterans park out front. That memorial itself has about $50,000. We've been putting in year after year to make it a better park and generally to bring up the appearance of Coal Hall in general for everybody.
Lon, did anyone answer your questions?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Excellent. Are there anybody else? Do we have anybody else coming in on any questions?
You have anybody telling? I'm just checking mine again.
Yep. Take your time.
No, I don't have anybody either. If there's anyone on the Zoom, if I'm not seeing you, just announce yourself and you can start speaking. I guess that's it.
Okay, let's move on to Article 3. Shall the voters authorize the elimination of the Office of Town Lister in accordance with 17VSA 2651CB1 and replace it with a professionally qualified assessor who shall have the same powers, discharge the same duties, proceed in the discharge thereof in the same manner, and be subject to the same liabilities as are prescribed for listers or the Board of Listers under the provisions of Title 32. Art, could you address that?
Yes. Many years ago, the listers were very important people in the town. They were elected by the, by the people. And their job was to set values to properties that then was used to base their people's taxes on. There, what became a problem is that when the state started doing the property values for school taxes, there was no consistency from one town to another. Each town has its own way of dealing with property appraisals and there was nothing consistent from one town to the another. These people were not qualified appraisers. They were just local townspeople trying to do the best job they could. So, the state mandated that each town have a professional appraiser to start doing appraisals of land and buildings and so on. They, each town was, did that. We went through a couple appraisers only because we would get somebody and they would be moving down to another bigger town. They had more money to pay them and so on and so forth. So, for the last two years, we have contracted with a company called Nimric that has a staff of appraisers that are available to us at any time. This company does all the appraising of new facilities and so on and so forth. It also tells us the information that needs to be entered into the computer. So, right now, the listers are just entering this data into the computers and are available a couple hours a day or a couple hours every other day or so to answer people's questions. Because we're actually doing this with appraisers, the listers are no longer really appraising values of land and property. So, what we're asking the townspeople to do is to do away with the three listers and let the Select Board hire somebody. In this case, we have chosen the Assistant Town Clerk, Mrs. Jenks, to be the person that works with Nimric, enters every information into the computer, is available all the days that the Town Clerk's office is open to answer people's questions, to contact Nimric directly if she can't answer them and so on and so forth. We just think it's a better service for the taxpayers and so on and so forth. So, that, that's what our thoughts are. The, and other towns are doing the same thing that we're considering now. So, again, it's up, it's your vote. What is a little bit confusing is that you also find on the ballot that there is, Mrs. Jenks' order, a name is on there as a, as a Lister. If the towns, if the voters vote this proposal down, then we are mandated to have three listers. And we, at the moment, Mrs. Jenks has been appointed by the Select Board because there was nobody that ran in the last election. So, it makes it a little bit confusing, I admit. But we needed a backup plan in case this was voted down. And that's all I have. Any questions now?
So, if you've got questions or comments, you can, if you're on by Zoom, if you unmute and have your video, come back on, we'll see you. Or you can, yes, Cindy, can you unmute?
Thank you. So, two questions. I'll ask them both and then go back to mute. One question is, is there a difference in the budget line item for? One question is, is there a difference in the budget line item for the listers doing this as a contract service? And then the second question is, when the time comes that we need to do a reappraisal in the town, is this company, Nimerick, available to come into the town and do the full reappraisal? Or does that become a different issue altogether? Thank you.
Thank you, Cinda.
What, Cinda, my understanding is, is that, yes, they are the ones that would do a townwide reappraisal upon the time that the state mandates that we are out of compliance. As of right now, we are still within the parameters that the state allows us. And to let everybody know, we have a lot of money set aside, every year we set aside money to do this. So, so it won't, shouldn't be a burden that comes. To answer your first question, I guess I got to refer to Dave on that one. I assume that all this is in the budget.
Yes, Cinda, the, on the professional services, you'll see sixteen thousand six hundred, which covers the contract with Nimerick to provide assessor services for the year. And on the item above, the wages for listeners would now be the wage for the assessor's clerk.
So I'm assuming that then means that, that we are adding $16,000 to the budget in order to do this as a contract service?
No, it's actually been in the budget for the last two previous years. First at fifteen-five was the first contract, last year was sixteen. We've been using them for a few years now.
Okay, that's great.
Excellent. Thank you, Cinda.
I believe the Spurs have a question. You have the hand raised.
The question I have is, can you please explain, expand on the professionally qualified assessor portion that you have in the Article Three?
Art, you want me to talk about that?
Yes, please.
Okay, assessors are licensed through the state. They go through many years actually of training before they can become an assessor. There's a list that you can hire through the state, Nimerick has a few of them. Over the last, since I've been here, there's always been an assessor who's been paid by the town. They were part-time and usually individuals. Each one of those, Nimerick would be the fifth group I've been with in nine years. Nimerick, because they have multiple assessors, can stay with it. Other people have left for various reasons. A number of our assessors, paid outside assessors, were actually hired away by the state to work for them. So it's not something you can just hire someone for. They have to be well-trained, they have to be licensed by the state and approved by the state for the town to hire them. And one reason why I do like Nimerick is because if, you know, in the past, when an assessor decided they didn't want to do it anymore, they left and we just didn't have anybody. Now, we just would get another assessor from the company and keep it going, which is a critical function because the whole basis of the town functioning runs on property assessment and you want it done fairly and correctly.
So, so if I understand correctly, Nimerick is this assessor group right now?
Yeah, they're quite a large group. They run many systems in the state and they have a statewide assessor program.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Some other questions? Lon?
It's really not a question, I just wanted to comment on this article. I'm chair of the Board of Civil Authority and we hear the tax appeals where the assessors will make a presentation. And I was, I ended my stint on the select board in two thousand and twelve and my observation has been that we've been down an assessor regularly since before my term ended. And I know this select board's done a really good job about trying to keep the positions filled. But one of the inherent difficulties with the listers system is that you have three independently elected officials. And so it's not organized like an office where you have some cohesive structure for how it's going to be managed, how the records are going to be kept. You have three independently and equally powerful individuals who get to decide how things are done. And it would be like having three town clerks, all running the town clerk's office the way they saw fit. And so I think that's posed some challenges for the town over the last ten or fifteen years. And some lack of continuity even in individual cases. So I think this move to away from elected listers who are only qualified by the fact, by the number of votes they collected, to more of a professional system where we're getting somebody who's going to know the entire town list, the grand list, and have an idea of the relative values of property so that people can be taxed comparably with comparable properties. It's really a good move, both for fairness and for really a more effective and efficient office. And so I'm really happy that the select board is taking this on this year because I think it makes a lot of sense for the town.
Thank you, Lon. I see the Spurs have their hand up.
We, we already asked, you already answered my questions. Thank you.
Okay, take your hand down if you can. Yes, Andrea?
Hi, thank you. I'm related to the issues that are going on, but sort of related. I just propose that whoever's in charge of the Zoom meetings could put some security methods in the settings to ensure that what just happened doesn't happen again. People can register via their email with a name, a first name and a last name. So we have some security for all meetings, not just the town meeting, day Zoom meeting, if it's, if it has to be on Zoom in the future. And I'd be happy to help whoever that is because I do that for my own meetings with my business. I just think it's really important that we have as much privacy and security and safety and, as we can possibly have in a meeting like this. Because that was really tough to watch and I'm not really feeling good about what just happened. So we'd like to propose that.
Great, very good. Thank, thank you, Andrew. Some more comments or questions? Dave, any emails or texts?
No, we don't have anything here.
Okay, we can move on to to our article number four. Shall the voters authorize amendments to the Shasbury zoning bylaws? Let's see, Art, can you talk, speak to that or do you have somebody that would?
I think, I think we originally thought that I would just go through them briefly, but is Chris Williams still on? Yes, I see Chris there. If there is any questions or I misrepresent something, Chris, please straighten me out. But I'll just go through briefly and just do it the way it was explained to us. The first article is the business of grandfathering. You have, if you have non, pre-existing non-conforming businesses that go out, what we're saying is that instead of one-year moratorium, it would be two years. The next one is no hell pads or private landing strips. That probably seems kind of bizarre to some people, but I think in towns around ski areas and resorts, there is the possibility that people want to start coming to their second home in their helicopter or private plane and it kind of creates a public nuisance type of thing. And so we, they have thought that probably would be best if Shasbury just had this in here. The next one is the biggest one as far as the number of pages that it takes up. It goes from thirteen, fourteen, and then halfway into fifteen. This is all just boundary line adjustments, lot line adjustments. We are not, this does not allow us to create new areas or anything else. It's just that if two properties are next to each other, you can make one larger and the other one smaller without a lot of hassle. In the past, we had to go through a lot of paperwork in the DRB and so on and so forth. We're just, it's, it's something that can happen very easily and we've just trying to make it a lot easier so it can't happen without a lot of paperwork and so on and so forth. The next article, of course, is probably the most controversial one. It's about allowing dog kennels. I will admit that there probably aren't very many towns in the state that have anything that addresses dog kennels. It's kind of a, it's a topic that's hard to discuss. It came as to us when somebody wanted to have a dog kennel here along with some other buildings and that sort of stuff for a very good cause, but our bylaws did not allow it. So the, the planning board was asked to try to come up with something. I think they have done a really good job. It requires a lot of land, a lot of area and a lot of setbacks from property lines and other buildings and so on and so forth. And the last thing is that the, they deleted some requirements for swimming pools in people's backyards or no longer has to be any setbacks and so on and so forth. Chris, if that isn't what the general thing is, you can correct me or if there's any comments from the public.
Can you, can you unmute, Chris? There you go, okay.
Okay, I, I thought that was a very good summary, Art. You hit all the high points and really this represents about two years of work for the planning commission. It's scattered across a whole bunch of different areas, but the underlying goal for all these is to make the process more streamlined. And the adjustment of the meets and bounds, lot line adjustment was at the request of the DRB that the language that they were working with that in the subdivision regulations was incomprehensible. And so this is a way of clarifying something that takes place fairly frequently.
Thank you, Chris. Mike Day, you have a question?
No, no question on this, just a, a note of appreciation as a DRB member and from the DRB that we appreciate this, the, the work of the planning commission and, and helping to clarify and make, and at the end of the day, make our jobs easier from the, the development review board standpoint. So thank you, Chris, and to your planning commission members.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
I just wanted to, again, to thank Chris for all the work because like I said, this, this was a two-year project, a lot of meetings.
Dave, you have anything coming in on text or emails?
The Spurs, you have a question on this one? I thought you handed it down.
Two things, one is I do appreciate the boundary line adjustment. If it can be addressed and adjusted and taken care of by the zoning administrator and such, that's great. Instead of going in front of the full board, other towns do that and I think that's a great thing. The second is, can you expand on the grandfathering portion, please?
Can I turn that over to Chris?
Need to, you need to unmute, please, Chris. Can you unmute?
I had.
There you go. Thank you.
Yeah, good, okay. This grew out of a discussion a couple of years ago about the status of the non-conforming commercial properties by Hidden Valley Road in the north part of Shasbury. You know, there was a flap saying we should rezone so they weren't non-conforming. And anyway, long story short, it caused us to really look at the question of abandonment of non-conforming uses. And that, it seemed like that might be hard to unwind that business use in, in a year. And that if we extended that to two years, nobody would be disadvantaged, but it might really help somebody transfer a business that had been there in some cases a long time. And so we pointedly did not expand the abandonment of residential properties, of which there are quite a few in town. So this is a commercial uses only.
Thank, thank you, everybody. Thank you, Chris.
Some other questions?
Just one quick thing. It's, it's also helpful because for a long time, commercial real estate was not moving very quickly and it could take a long time to sell a business property. I think Second Chance was sort of an example of a property that lay dormant for a long time. And the one-year limitation period would mean that somebody couldn't come in and use that property as a clinic or a kennel necessarily because it took so long to find another prospective owner. So I think this and have enough time to really market and sell it in the town.
Thank you, Lon. Let's see.
Tom, we have no one else on.
Okay. That being said, so the next item that we've got on our agenda is just community appropriations. A discussion, I, I believe. Art, do you have something?
Yes, if you have the town report in front of you, I ask you to go to page seventeen. This is a, this is all of the people that have asked the town for money. A lot of them for, all of them for very good purposes and so on and so forth. The problem is, is that this is a big number. This is ninety-four thousand, fifty dollars. It's a seven percent increase over last year and it's actually four percent of our annual budget. The, the town does not have a good policy in place that is definitive as to what shows up as a community appropriation. It started out years ago that if somebody wanted to ask the town for money, they filled out a petition, I think five percent of the voters of Shasbury. They stood up at the town meeting and, and wherever it was held and said, this is what we want the money for. They could be asked questions about their budget and so on and so forth. But with, now with twenty-eight of them, that would be an impossible task to do at town meeting, at the, at the, at the town, floor town meeting. So what has happened is that people do the, do the petition, get on the board, get on the list. But there is nothing definitive in our policy that says what happens next year. So we feel we have to put the same article on the, on the budget as it was last year. And some people say, well, I want more money. I'm going to ask for more money on the thing and there's nothing in our policy that says they can't do that. We are desperately working, going to be working on in the coming year on coming up with a We are desperately working, gonna be working on in the coming year on coming up with a policy that is a little bit of. Uh, fairer to everybody uh, and kind of puts this under control. I guess the select board kind of thinks that. This is kind of getting out of control when four percent of our budget is going for something like this. It's not that they aren't. Worthwhile projects. It's just that we don't seem to have any control over it. Um. The. V L T C has come up with some recommendations for us. And I will admit that all towns are dealing with this same sort of thing, but. We will be discussing this in future select boards meetings, and we want the public to be uh, to have some input in into this. But again, uh, if you. The the budget that we presented to you has. This ninety-four thousand dollars in it already. So that if all of these are approved, that is the actual budget. So by voting down some of these, if you don't think that they are worthwhile or something for it, you actually are reducing. The total budget slightly and therefore reducing your tax.
See a question or comment from Chandler?
Good afternoon. I'm a resident of Shasbury and also I'm coming also representing Sunrise Family Resource Center. Um, we've, I believe, kept the request um, consistent. Um, it's it's at least the same this year as it was last year and um. There's, I don't have numbers for Shasbury about how many people, families were served. Um, but we're appreciative of uh, the the amount that um, Shasbury has sent to us year after year. And it wouldn't make. And it would make sense to me that in order to increase, to 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 ask for more. There would need to be a procedure in place for that. That that makes sense to me as a Shasbury resident. Um. To, to obtain signatures can be a hardship for some of the smaller kind of nonprofits that are asking. Um, it's fair to to do that initially or, you know, when increasing the ask. Um, but I feel that Sunrise is an important service for uh, families in Shasbury. Um, even though it's located in Bennington. Um, so uh, we are, we are appreciative. Um, also understanding the budget limitations of the town. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chandler.
Um, I'll point out that Sunrise is level funded for the last three or four years. They have not asked for any increase.
So if they um, what they should be cognizant of or aware of is is just what Art has said, that the select board is going to be addressing. Um, the issue. Going forward, um, in the next number of meetings. And is there um. And then and there would, and and I know the select board will will find some different ways of of addressing. Um, the different uh, needs of the of of uh, those um. Uh, community appropriations requests. Other questions, comments? Concerns? Uh, Jenny Rosicky?
Hey, hello, um, Wood. This is, I'm Jenny Rosicky. I'm the director over at the McCullough Library in North Bennington, and we're one of those. Um, uh, organizations requesting appropriations would now be a good time to. Generally extend thanks, give a few updates, or should that be in the comments section at the end of the meeting?
Probably should be comments at at.
Okay, great. I'll stay tuned. Thank you.
Anybody else? Dave, anything?
No, we we don't have anyone.
Okay, so I believe we could move on to um. Move on to. Discussion of other non-binding business. Um, because of COVID, everything and it being remote. Everything we're saying and doing today is non-binding. Um, I want to go back to uh. Ms. Kuhn, I think it was Jody Kuhn raised a question in the very beginning that we put over until. Uh, this portion of the meeting. Uh, Jody, do you? Well, she's still there, but um, Dave. Could she, could you re- repeat what her question was, please?
Yes, and she reached out to me saying that she's can't connect, but.
Okay.
He's appearing here, so I don't know what the the problem is. Uh, it was more a statement. I would like to know who is responsible for illegally posting land for tax sale and what the town of Shasbury is doing to correct it.
For illegally posting. Notices of tax sales?
Yeah, this is uh.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what she's asking. Uh, you know, clearly, we don't illegally post tax sales. So it's a question that is uh, needs to be determined probably in another forum.
I agree. That's, there's a factual basis there that um, isn't. Um, isn't appropriate for this meeting, this town meeting. Okay, um, Jenny Rosicky? There you go.
Oh, gosh. Hello. Okay, um. So um, I'm Jenny Rosicky. I'm the director of the McCullough Library in North Bennington. Um, we're on the the ballot for community appropriations. Um, I believe we're asking for a five percent increase this year. Um, and a lot of thought and care goes into making uh, those requests when we're doing our our budgeting for the year. And um, I'd like to thank Shasbury residents um, for their continued support for the library, both in terms of usage. Um, and in terms of um, financial support. Um. A few fun updates. Oh, I'd like to say if you're interested in taking advantage of everything the library offers, I'd encourage you to go to our website. McCulloughlibrary.org. We recently revamped the website. And there's a link there where you can activate your free membership um, to get access to all sorts of books, DVDs. Uh, interlibrary loan features, uh, as well as eBooks, uh, digital audiobooks and video streaming through Canopy. So, um, check that out. And um, we are currently in the middle of a enormous renovation uh, project over at the library. Um, and I'd like to point out that uh, no local funds were used. Uh, in funding this um, roughly three hundred and fifty thousand dollar project. Uh, that's all been donations, bequests, grants, uh, and ARPA funding through North Bennington. And um, so. Trying to have as little local impact in terms of funding as we possibly can, but these um, necessary upgrades include uh, ADA compliant restrooms. Uh, that are also family friendly. So a changing table for our visiting families. Uh, necessary electrical rewiring, uh, fire safety improvements, uh, and HVAC system. Uh, to help with air quality in a public building. Uh, a water fountain with a bottle filler, so you can get a cup of water in North Bennington. Um, repairs to the portico. Um, the historic parts of the front facade have been water damaged. So those are getting repaired. We have a new back door that opens and closes smoothly in a welcoming sort of way, and. The Laura Novak Memorial Meeting Room, we're turning the closet full of old furniture on the second floor into a laptop bar and small meeting space. So all of that's happening right now, and we expect to be open in June. And I'm sure you'll be hearing about it because we just received a a grant, a ten thousand dollar grant through the um. Associate, I'm sorry, the American Library Association to help market that reopening. Um, and the rest can go into operations, which is unheard of. So we were one of two hundred libraries selected nationwide for that grant. So. Um, I'm sure you'll be hearing all about it, but I hope you'll be able to join us for the reopening in June, and thank you for your support.
That's excellent. Thank you very much for that, that update and that information. So we're under other business. Looking for anything. Yes, Jason. Jason Lilly, can you unmute, unmute? There you go. Yep. Yeah, go ahead, Jason. And we're still, we can't hear you. Still can't hear you. It looks like you have unmuted, but uh, it's not coming through. Still can't hear you. No. Try testing your mic and your speakers. Go to that section. Not yet. Keep working on it. We'll, I'll come back to you. Uh, do I have anybody else that's uh, got some comments? Uh, let's see. No hands up.
Anyone on on here either. Uh, Jason, if you uh, leave and reenter, sometimes that corrects this problem. I don't know if he's hearing us.
I don't know, Jason. Um, can you, can you hear me, Jason? Um, suggestions been made if if you leave and reenter. Uh, the system will reset. There we go. Meanwhile, anybody else?
Tom?
Yes, David.
Hi, I just wanted to be sure that if anybody had questions related to the state that they wanted to pose to me. That uh, I'm here and happy to speak to that.
Okay, thank you. Jason, are you available online now? Can we hear from you?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, very good. Yes, we can.
So I left it and came back and it worked. Okay, um, I'm representing W B T N radio station. I think we level funded again this year. Uh, a lot of exciting things have happened in the last year at the station. Uh, our transition over to FM. They're still, we're only six, eight months into it, so we're still working some of the kinks out. But we have some very good programs. Uh, a couple residents of Shasbury have got their own shows on there now. Um, Alan Baker, he's been on for years um, with Politics of Food every Thursday. And we have uh, Sierra Brown, uh, Amy Roberts' daughter. She has a law enforcement show on each week on Wednesday afternoons at four o'clock. Um, they've stepped up and been a really big um, helper at the station. Uh, we're in great shape now. We're we're plugging along. We've made the transition over to Rock. Sundays, we still have uh. Some country in the mornings. We have the NASCAR race on every week. And uh, we want to reach out and say thank you to uh, the town of Shasbury, been a supporter of us now for, I believe, four or five years. And uh, we really appreciate it. So I want to make sure we made the meeting today to to. To shoot that out there. W B T N A M dot org is our website. Uh, ninety-seven, ninety-six point five thirteen seventy are our numbers. And uh, most in the morning from seven to nine, you can call in. We do the birthdays every morning still. It's been going for many, many, many years. And uh, any questions, feel free to to ask one of us.
I I do have one. Is um, uh, is is the FM portion, does that, do you have anything to do with NPR?
No. So what happened was in the past, when the AM and FM went up for sale, when Southern Vermont College put it up for sale. Uh, NPR bought the ninety-four point three FM side. So then what I had to do, geez, three years ago now, almost four years ago, I applied to the FCC for a license for an FM station. And they gave me ninety-six point five, and it took three years of paperwork and logistics to. And fundraising and all that to get. It up and running by June eighth of last year, which we did. And uh. We're hoping now that once we have it, now we can apply for. Permits to boost the signal because the FM works great if you're outside. If you go too much north of town, it gets fuzzy again. We want to try to. Boost it up because right now we're only at seventy-five feet high. If we go up on top of the tower at two hundred and six, we'll be able to reach more Shasbury residents. But the person that bought the tower a few years ago, they were going to replace it, so we didn't want to put the expense of putting the cable up on the tower if they're going to be replacing it. So. We're in, we're in a limbo right now of getting it up to two hundred feet high, but we put up the seventy-five footer last year and. And knock on wood, everything's working. We just uh. Got to keep it going. If we lose our community radio station, we can't get it back because it's so hard. I mean, I went through three years of permitting to get the FM side that I've got now.
Great, great. Thank you for answering that question. Um, let's see. Martha, you have a question? Can you unmute? There you go.
Thank you. Um, I just um, wanted to get to Dave and there isn't a chat button. I've gotten several emails from folks that are trying to get on the Zoom call and are not able to get into the meeting at the moment, and they'd like to speak. Thank you.
I have no one waiting. Naomi Miller, yes.
Hi, thank you. I just wanted to comment um, about the appropriations for entities that are out of town that um. Because they are not entities that we have in town and because our residents use them. It's really important that we not think of them as as other. They are part of us. And if we don't fund them, things like Sunrise House, the library, we're being freeloaders. And I think it's very easy to think in terms of town lines, but but in terms of these services and resources, the town lines are not important. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Naomi. Some other people? If I could go back to Martha for a minute, if there's someone out there who's trying to, I have no one waiting.
I don't know. Scott Winslow, who is the former um, executive director from Bennington Free Clinic. Uh, been trying to get on.
Okay. If you can have him try again, I'll get him on.
Okay.
Would like to say something. Andrea Baki. Um, I'm gonna have to agree with what Naomi Miller just said. The programs that we're looking at funding um, and allocating money to as a town. You know, we can't think, in my opinion, we can't think about, we're only affected in Shasbury by the the things we help in Shasbury. We live in Bennington County. We live in Vermont. Vermont, I know, takes care of its people in ways that go further than just our town. So if we're gonna start closing ourselves off from other towns and saying we can't help Sunrise, or we can't help. W B T N, which W B T N's been around forever. We have to keep, I'm in, I'm involved in digital marketing, my business, but if if I'm gonna say we have to support radio, I mean, that's a huge thing. We totally have to support radio, especially a local channel. I don't think it 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 feels right to not support these organizations that actually help the community because we're in the community. Right? I don't, I think I one hundred percent agree with Naomi, and if we have, we're worried about taxes raising and all this jazz. Honestly, if we don't have programs, we don't have a community. We don't have health. We don't have the Bennington Free Clinic. We don't really have anything if we're not looking to help each other. And I don't think that um. You know, especially with a pandemic, I don't think we should be thinking about how can we. you know, especially with a pandemic, I don't think we should be thinking about how can we cut, cut? Maybe we should look at, I don't know how much we're spending on trucks, or whatever that looks like, maybe we should see where we have to allocate the money in ways that are fiscally responsible, and not just say, let's cut from Sunrise. I don't think that makes financial responsibility sense. So thanks, Naomi, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Andrea. Lon McClintock.
Years past, we have had a report from our state representative. I hope we go back to that tradition when we start meeting in person. Is there any chance we could have a brief report in the section of the meeting?
How about it, David?
I'm happy to give a brief report, I realize that Zoom meetings are tiring and we're already an hour into it, so I can speak now, Tom, or if you want to wait and make sure there aren't any other questions?
Well, why don't you go ahead now, and because if there are other questions, we'll be able, they're slow coming in, Dave will be able to stack them up.
Okay, well, I'll try, I'll be brief. And thank you, and thanks, Lon, for asking. I'll touch on three things. Just the state's financial picture, which is good, very good. And I wanted to talk a little bit about the upcoming redistricting of legislative districts. And say a couple of words about two constitutional amendments that voters will be asked to ratify in November, so not, not at town meeting this week, but in November. And then if there are questions about legislation or anything else, I'd be happy to try and answer them too. But much like Art mentioned at the very beginning, that we, the towns have been getting ARPA funding, the state has also been getting ARPA funding and previous COVID funding. Now, infrastructure money is coming in. It's really unprecedented, and on top of that, which is really temporary, one-time funding, on top of that, state revenues have been much stronger than they have been in recent years, or in any years. So income tax receipts, sales tax receipts are all very strong. And that leads to, has led to surpluses in both our general, the state's general fund and the state education fund. So we're looking at the actual possibility of tax cuts. And in, in the few years that I've been in the legislature, and I think Alice would say the same thing for the last couple of decades, the struggle has always been to find enough money to pay for all of the programs that just, just like in the conversation we've been having here at the, at the local level, at the state level, there's always plenty to be spent on, that we would all agree are good, useful programs. The state also helps support Sunrise, just for example. So we're in a situation where this year we do have a lot more funding than we have had in the past coming in. So one of the proposals that the House has put out is a fairly targeted child tax credit, which would look somewhat like the federal, existing federal tax credit. We don't, we haven't up to this point had a separate child tax credit in Vermont, so this would be new starting this year, starting 2022. We've also proposed expanding the deduction for social security income. Right now, if you, if you're retired and your entire income is through social security, you're not paying any taxes on that. As you, if you have additional income sources, if you get up to beyond $50,000 or $60,000, and some of that is taxed, we're proposing that we raise that threshold somewhat. There will be still plenty of funding left over to cover the additional, as I said, many, many needs, housing being one of them in the state. Anyone who's been, ever had to use, or knows someone who's had to use the services at United Counseling, knows that they are struggling for staffing. The staffing there is paid mostly through funding that's provided by the state, and it hasn't kept up as wages have grown. So I, you know, the list could go on and on, there's plenty of need for funding, and it's, we're a good place financially to help cover more and more of that. So that's, that's the first thing, the second thing I just wanted to mention was that every 10 years, the census is taken, and when new population counts are determined, the state has to redistrict its senators and state representatives. And it's been process has been going on now for about a year and a half, the census was delayed, the counts were delayed, and they didn't, they weren't finalized until well after they normally would be in 2020. And at this point now, just actually this past week, a fairly firm proposal has been is, I guess, about to be voted out as committee in the House. And I'll just summarize by saying Shasbury will remain in that proposal, the entire town of Shasbury will remain in a single legislative district. And that's, that's different from what was originally proposed. A lot of credit to our select board and other members of the Board of Civil Authority for responding to that initial proposal and, and really suggesting that it wasn't going to work for Shasbury. And that, so those voices were heard. The district, just so that you all know, it also includes Glossonberry, all nine people in Glossonberry, and it includes a section of Sunderland that are bordering Glossonberry with about 400, be about 400 people under this proposal next year. Constitutional amendment, so Vermont's constitution has, has been around for 200-plus years, and it hasn't been amended very many times. So I think it takes several steps, lots of work, and this year, I don't know whether, it's never happened before, but it'd be sort of unusual to have two amendments. One is, I don't want to describe it as a technical correction, because that's probably trivializing it, but Vermont is, I think, proudly known as the first state to abolish slavery in its constitution. Again, that was way back. Recently, it's been pointed out by people who've been looking at that, that yes, it was certainly true that we abolished slavery, but there were some caveats, one of which was that it only applied to adults, people over 21. So just to make sure that there was no ambiguity there and no, no misreading, there will be an amendment that makes it fair, extremely clear that there is, there is no no right to slavery or indentured servitude in Vermont. The second amendment, which is actually Proposal Five, that will be on the ballot, will likely be more controversial. It is to establish reproductive liberty, it's the reproductive liberty amendment. And it essentially says that the state is not allowed to interfere in any individual's reproductive decisions. I, I will just say for what I hope will be some clarity, that that amendment won't change anything that's actually happened, happening in Vermont today, or has happened in Vermont for the past 50 years. There, even since before the Roe v. Wade decision at the federal level, there haven't been any restrictions on abortion in the state of Vermont. And I guess I should also mention that federal law would always supersede Vermont law, so nothing in Vermont's constitution would prevent a federal law being applied. So I will, I said I would be brief, so I'll stop there, I'm happy to take questions on any of that or anything else. And if you realize afterwards that you had a question, you hadn't thought of it in a moment, you can always reach out to me. You can, probably the easiest thing, rather than reach you by long and not easy to remember email address, is to just Google Vermont Legislature and look me up, and you can find ways to contact me there. And you're muted.
Tom, you're muted. Tom, you're on mute. Tom, you're on mute.
Okay, there, how's that? David, I apologize, folks. Could you repeat that last information about how to contact you, you kind of faded out?
Okay, yeah, sorry. So probably the easiest way, Tom, is just go to the Google Vermont Legislature and find, you can find a list of all legislators and find my email address there. You can also come knock on my door, I live in the Red House across from the cemetery.
Great, thank you, thank you. Let's see. Somebody who was trying, Scott Winslow, Scott. I understand you were trying to get in.
It's all good, Tom.
Yep.
I had left the meeting and I couldn't get back in, and somebody admitted, so I'm happy to listen in, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, some other folks? Anything, Dave?
I don't have anything, Tom, nope. Nothing on email, nothing on the screen.
Okay. Yes, Dave?
Tom, I, I saw on the agenda, the discussion of the Listers was 4:15. Did I miss that?
Yes, you did, however, what do, what do you have? We can revisit.
No, that, that's all right, I, I'll get in touch with Gina tomorrow. I just, I wondered, is there still going to be any elected Oversight Board with the Listers, or is, is, if we approve this, would the assessor be hired and overseen by the Select Board? I guess that's the fundamental question.
Okay. Art?
Yes. Yes, my understanding is that that will be the process. From now on, the Select Board will be responsible for making sure that we have a certified appraiser that does it. And that it, as of right now, we've decided to hire Nimric, which has a full crew of them, so we aren't stuck with somebody moving on and being lost, being without somebody. And yes, that we would then hire a person to do data entry into the computer and be responsible for meeting with the public if they have any questions, so the answer is yes, there probably would be no more public voting on Listers.
Good, thank you.
Anybody else, any questions? It's a very strange way to do a public meeting, a town meeting, and a little bit of luck, next year we'll all be able to meet all together. Dave, do you have anything further?
No, we don't have any questions waiting and no emails.
Okay. That being said, I'm going to adjourn this meeting until 7:00 AM Tuesday, March 1, for voting by Australian ballot at the Town Garage on North Road. Thank you all for attending.
Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.